Good evening, I'm here by the way.
All right, hello.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, Ms. Hello, Ms. Seem.
Hi.
So we're still waiting on a couple people. Mr. Cronwell, how are you?
Doing great.
Wonderful to see you.
Got my half and half ready. Eating my corned beef and cabbage.
There you go.
Andy, you know you have yourself in as the TARDIS, right?
Oh, you know, it's funny, I keep remembering to change that, but I don't know why doing that. What happened is that the hard drive is called the TARDIS. And but I have Zoom and I logged in. And every time I go into a meeting, I have to change it. Thanks for pointing that out. Yeah, so yeah, and it's only been doing that, I think, recently, but. All right, I am going to ping a couple extra members. Just to see if I can get things going here. Okay, and I think that it's actually just one member. That. One is accused for the evening.
Who's excused?
Molly Koychouak is not going to be able to make it. So I will give another minute or so for Ms. Lukic and then we'll get the ball rolling here. I have six of four, so six of five, I'll call it.
Teresa, are you in Wisconsin, Florida?
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Danielle?
Are you, are you in Wisconsin again? Are you in Florida? I never, never know where you are.
Me neither. Actually, I think we're still in Indiana. We just took off today for another trip south. But we have a layover in Richmond for a soccer, soccer tournament until Sunday. And then we go to Florida Sunday afternoon.
Oh, nice.
But we'll be back. The following Monday.
We have a quorum, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order and do roll call. Teresa Seem.
Here.
And Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Andrew Franklin is here. So having a quorum, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
And is there a second, Ms. Seem?
I'm moved, or rather, second.
Do a voice vote today, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
And voice vote carries with the majority, so we are going to go into executive session.
So moved, Teresa.
Second, Danielle.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Oh, well, any discussion first of all? Seeing none, let's just do a quick roll call vote to Mika Mukavich.
Yes.
And Teresa Seem.
Aye.
And Danielle Bailey.
Aye.
And Andrew Franklin votes aye. The agenda is approved. Item number two, actually, two A through F is consideration of the consent agenda. So I'm gonna read through these one at a time. Item two A is approval of minutes, and the minutes go from two, one to two twenty-four meetings. The curriculum committee of two-one, the communications committee of two-one, the policy committee of two-nine, communication to ten, finance personnel to eleven, executive session to sixteen, regular board meeting to seventeen, special board meeting to eighteen, and then to executive sessions on two twenty-three, two twenty-four. So that's two A, approval of financials, this item to B. Item two C is approval of four paraprofessionals at Parkway Elementary School. Item two D is approval of three paraprofessionals at Glen Hills Middle School. Item two E is approval of one substitute educational interpreter at Parkway Elementary. And item two F is approval of one full-time second shift custodian at Glen Hills Middle School. So having read all that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Danielle.
Second, Tamika.
Okay, is there any discussion? If not, I'll do a roll call vote. Danielle Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, Tamika Bukovic. And Teresa Seem. I'll pass on Teresa Seem. Andrew Franklin votes aye. Teresa Seem.
Aye.
Great, motion carries. All right, then we are on to item three A. Reopening updates and data reports from the North Shore Health Department.
Thank you, President Franklin and members of the Glendale River Hill School Board. As with the policy committee chaired by Ms. Seem. Tonight, Jenica Westfall is going to substitute on giving the update and data reports from the North Shore Health Department. So, and that worked well with the policy committee. So with your approval, Mr. Franklin, I'd like to call upon Ms. Westfall to make this presentation.
Please.
All right, thanks, everyone. I'm just gonna share my screen so we can get back to the slideshow, so I do that right now. Okay, so reopening schools, so we're back to our reopening schools and talking about the rates of COVID and whatnot. So today is March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and we will move forward with this. So our guidelines for school decision points are still the same. We have the COVID nineteen burden, the COVID nineteen cases, the percent of positivity, and then also the care rates. So all the data being presented here are directly from the North Shore Health Department's most recent report, and that's dated from March twelfth, twenty twenty-one. So digging a little deeper into each criteria, the COVID nineteen burden right now is moderately high because it is more than the fifty cases currently. So again, the burden again is moderately high. This is just a different graph looking at it. When we look at our COVID nineteen cases, we are trending down, so this is positive. So we did have two new cases, and the data that you're seeing in this graph here is from February twenty-sixth through March eleventh. So we are trending down. So this is some other information that's looking really good. Normally, that five percent or lower is ideal for permitting schools to meet in person. And right now, Glendale, our two-week turnaround is at two percent. So we went from a three point one percent to a two percent. So you can kind of see the other districts and surrounding areas, and we are at, again, two percent. On the other side, at the right side of your screen, you'll notice it, it's by age group. So you can kind of see the test percent positive for the current data as well. This is another section here. These are the burden calculations that are performed by age group. Something to note is we do have more in the green over here. We do have two cases in Glendale for the ages five to nine, and one case in the ten to fourteen student range. So we are continuing to improve in our care rates, as shown by the charts here. These are taken from Milwaukee County Dashboard. And then this is another chart that they share on the dashboard, so we are still continuing to improve with our care rates. So this has been recently updated, so you can look on here. On the bottom chart is what we've been utilizing most recently. So if we look at our burden rate, it's now in the orange, which is an improvement. We went from a burden of one hundred and seventy-one to ninety-three, which is fantastic. The number of new cases, as you can see, has changed from nine to two. And our positivity rate has decreased three percent to two percent. So our trends, we're seeing our trends going down. So again, this is the metrics that we utilize for making recommendations for the learning model, so I'm just sharing this again. We make criteria, so we are all green and yellow in all the criterion areas, which is another positive, so celebration. When we look at our data at the Glendale River Hill School District, we have two staff members currently who are in quarantine. We have one active student case within the district. We have twenty-one students in quarantine, and that's based on a classroom closure. So we have one classroom closure as well. Whoops. Jenica, is the staff quarantined related to the classroom closure too? Okay. So some positive stuff going on in the district. We did have a vaccine clinic, and now we're gonna be looking at our round two for a vaccine clinic, which is happening April ninth. So employees have another, all staff affiliated with the district do have another opportunity to receive their round two vaccine. And we, we've been given the Mandura vaccine, so we'll get a chance to receive our round two of that. So after our policy meeting, I added a couple slides here to kind of talk a little bit about the CDC guidelines for fully vaccinated people. So I thought I'd share that out tonight, if that would be okay. So fully vaccinated people are, so this is the definition that's being shared, is people greater or equal to two weeks after they receive their second dose. So after two weeks of receiving the Pfizer or the Mandura dose, they'll be considered fully vaccinated. And what does that mean for us, or if you are fully vaccinated? The CDC says that they can visit other fully vaccinated people indoors without wearing masks or physically distancing. And they can visit unvaccinated people within a single household who are at low risk for COVID nineteen disease indoors without wearing masks or physically distancing, and refrain from quarantine and testing, following a known exposure if asymptomatic. So that's the key word, if they're asymptomatic. So what, what we're doing is we're gonna continue to mask in, in schools, right? It's a public place. So as you can see here, we need to continue to take precautions in public. Okay, we will continue, even though we will be fully vaccinated by the end of April. We will continue to wear our well-fitting masks and social distance and utilize our mitigation strategies at school. So I just want to be clear on that. With the CDC guidelines coming out for this, that we're gonna continue our mitigation strategies within the district. So wearing masks, practicing physical distancing, adhering to the CDC guidelines. So and just still avoiding those medium and large size in-person gatherings. We will also continue to utilize Zoom and making sure that we're not meeting in large groups. So all of those things, we're gonna end up continuing. So, and I did want to mention too, that there is, Nicolay is running a clinic as well. So I believe that's gonna be coming out in the Thursday folder that Nicolay, for anybody who is eligible, based off of the state guidelines, if you're eligible, you have an opportunity to sign up at Nicolay for the clinic that they will be running. So I did want to share that information, and I believe Nicolay is sending that out in the Thursday folder for all families to review. So does anybody have any questions on our most recent data?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask, because this is our first board meeting since we reopen now, too. And so we had a positive test, I guess what I'm curious about are a couple of different things, without, you know, extending to violate any confidentiality, but I want to find out, you know, if the student is okay, we know. But more importantly, I want to understand how our response was, I like to say more importantly, equally important, I want to understand how our response was to the positive test, you know, if our procedures worked as expected. And if, you know, we had any lessons learned or any feedback from anyone as we sent out notice to Parkway. It looked from my end pretty smooth, and I just wanted to, you know, if there's any additional feedback in how we handle things, since we actually had to deal with the situation.
Yeah, I will say that I was a part of it, but not a large part of the communication plan for that. But I can say that Ms. Young followed protocol when she was notified of that positive case. She went through the steps that were in our most current handbook that was shared out with families and utilized the communication tools within that. So staff was notified, the families were notified, an email was sent out to families, a phone call was sent out to families, and then also, Dr. Moser also sent out a follow-up email as well. For the. Just to follow that up quickly, though, I'm not sure if we posted anything to our website, which I do believe was part of the initial communication plan. And I don't know what that would look like, where it would be posted or whatnot. I don't know if that's posting Dr. Moser's letter on our reopening page or something to that effect. But I don't know if that's still part of it, but I would just put that out there. I'm not sure if we did that. I would have to check on that. I'm not sure either, to be honest. And I, I think it's great that we did all the other.
Yeah, we will, I'll double check. I'm, I'm, I'm with Jenica off the top of my head. I can't answer that. But we will, we'll check on that and, and we will take remedial action if, if I haven't.
Hi, this is Karen.
Hi, Karen.
I'm coming out of nowhere, sorry. Yes, I posted it on the Glen Hills portion of the page per Anna's, Dr. or Ms. Young's request.
Oh, okay, okay. It was like a news, a news thing on the Glen Hills page. Okay, I didn't, yeah, I didn't check there, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have a question. I'm not sure it's for you, Jenica. It's just a general question around vaccination. And I know we may be sort of limited through legal for, around legality or HIPAA, but will we have any idea how much of our staff is actually vaccinated, or do we have any idea? I, I know that we can't, I'm not sure if we can ask that or not, but.
Well, we, we will know. Ms. Bailey, we will know who has participated in our clinics, clinic, our clinics.
Yeah.
We have not made it a requirement of employment that a student, or student, excuse me, that an employee has to get a vaccination. We encourage it. We encourage the vaccination. We think it's appropriate, but we can't require it. And, and we have not surveyed, but we can get an indication of how many individuals
Yeah.
at, at our, at our clinic, our clinics, received the vaccination. And we can find that out for the board, yes.
Yeah, I was just curious, sort of forward-thinking about the, the fall and what things will look like, you know, understanding how much of our staff is vaccinated, may, you know, maybe a factor. So it's just something I wanted to think out loud.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think that it's also an opportunity, frankly, to pat ourselves on the back, and maybe we can provide some incentive if we're up to a hundred percent, or, you know, some, some good figure. So, you know, I always like to encourage people to do the right thing. Vaccination's important. So if there's some way that we can, you know, extend gratitude to teachers in that way, I would find that to be a really good idea.
And I will say, the staff has been extremely positive and proactive of getting their own vaccinations even before we had the vaccination clinic. So that's definitely a shout out to the staff for really doing some of that legwork. And then also having the district having that for staff has been just fantastic, so. I would just add two announcements or two things I know around vaccination as well. I know Milwaukee County is now vaccinating anyone over eighteen, regardless of eligibility. If you are in various zip codes, five three two oh nine is one of them. So there's information there through Milwaukee County. And then it's my understanding that the, the next group, the high-risk group, has actually been moved up a week. And so folks will be eligible starting March twenty-second. And it's not been confirmed, but I did hear that pregnant women may be included in that group as well. So as a vaccinated pregnant woman, I would just let people, just putting that out there. Half-vaccinated. So anyway, so those would just be my two notes for the community as well.
Thank you, Danielle. That's great.
Well, does anyone else have anything? Okay, well, Ms. Westfall, I want to say thank you for all the hard work you are doing. And also to extend, I know behind the scenes, everyone else is contributing to the information of the report, including Ms. Kilton, Dr. Kilton, I should say, and so thank you. Then our next item on the agenda is item four A, which is visitor participation. So I will give everyone a moment to raise your hand, but visitor participation. Visitors may speak in any non-agenda or agenda item at this time. State law and or board policy may limit school board response. Please keep your comments or questions to a total of three minutes. And then I will just try to fill the dead space by telling you that we really appreciate everyone being here. And we appreciate your inputs and your questions. So if you do have any questions and you think something after today, feel free to reach out to one of us. But in the meantime, we encourage you to offer your comments now. Okay, and I see that we have a couple hands coming up, so I will start with Amber Parham.
Hey, guys. Amber Parham, eighteen sixty-five West Daisy Lane. I have a daughter at Parkway in the five K program who stayed virtual. After talking with a few parents, actually, quite a few parents at Parkway, and them telling me how many, that their child had to stay homesick, and their child had to stay homesick. It got me wondering how many kids were homesick today at Parkway or this week. And so I called the school, wondering, asking that question. How many, what's your apps, what's your absent rate, or like, how many students do you have out sick today? Is that a number? They told me that they couldn't give me that information. And then later, Mrs. Umar called me up with that information. Is that, is the absent rate or percentage rate available for parents to know right offhand? Or is that like a private, is that like private, that they can't, they can't be, like, a parent can't call up and the office can't tell them that?
Mr. Frank, President Franklin, would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
Sure, thank you. If, if that calculation is, is available at the time you call, as long as we're not giving names or identifying or giving information that would indicate the name of a child or of a family, sure, we can give you the information on.
Okay, because I was earlier, I was, before Mrs. Umar called, I was told that it was policy rule that they could not give out how many kids were absent.
No.
So, okay, very good.
It's all right that we can do that, as long as we recognize the privacy of our children.
Absolutely.
Or families, or anything that would lead to identifying individual children.
Yeah, because I had asked, I'm like, I don't want a list of names, and I don't want specifics. I just want a number. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next person is Robert Cronwell.
Hey, Robert Cronwell, seventy-five thirty North Applewood Lane. I've moved on to Irish whiskey now, Andy. You got some catching up to do. So I, I was wondering, who is the new business manager? And is this gonna be a permanent position or an interim position? I think he was at the last personnel meeting, but it got passed in the consent agenda, and I have no idea who this guy is. Just curious.
President Franklin, I'd be happy to answer that question.
Please do.
The position is an interim school business administrator. The individual is Dr. Gary Peterson. Dr. Peterson is the retired superintendent of schools from the Fox Point Bayside School District. He's the retired dean of the School of Education at Concordia University. He is a member of the Board of Regents at Concordia University. He is a, obviously, with his credentials, a, a well-suited person to help, to help me and the school board on an interim basis as the district's business administrator.
Okay. And Ms. Cronwell, if you didn't have any follow-ups, I will move on to our next person, Tracy Stettler.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I hope my sound is coming through good tonight. Okay, good. Just a couple of things this evening. I just wanted to urge the board to, to give administration the ability to retrofit any sort of PPE, like additional air purifiers or humidifiers where applied, for any teachers that feel that they need that or, and don't have it yet. Secondarily, I, I don't want to drop a big bomb here, but I kind of do. I'm hoping that we can, once we get the superintendent choice, and once we're through that, I'm hoping that we can make the first big task of our superintendent to really back the Building and Grounds Commission and get this thing done. Let's put some ventilation in this. Jim Beckman dropped this million-dollar price tag, and I looked at that like, okay, I, we're gonna have to find a million dollars. And so I started researching, and we are not alone, ladies and gentlemen. Thirty-six thousand public school districts in the ninety-six thousand public school districts in this country have million-dollar ventilation fixes. So we are not alone. There's already bills being entered into the Senate floor. And so I'm hoping that we might really up the timeline on taking a really serious look at funding and completing both the expansion of Parkway as well as the ventilation to fix our schools. We'll be doing this for the next thirty, possibly fifty years of children. And I think that it is a great, great result out of what has been an awful, awful year. And so I'm hoping I can urge the board to make that their first mission, is to back the buildings and grounds, which is on the twenty-fifth. At what time, Tamika?
We will, I don't know if we're having a meeting yet or not.
Oh, all right.
So wait, and I just want to let you know, with my buildings and grounds, sometimes there is. So wait, and I just want to let you know with my buildings and grounds, sometimes there's no decisions to be made yet or we're gathering information. So I don't have meetings when there's nothing to do. So I'm just letting you know, but I was going to talk to um Jim and Jim, Mr. Beckman and Dr. Moser about if we need a meeting. But I love the fact that you know how important buildings and grounds are.
Oh, my gosh, the most important. And my calculations have us getting just under a half a million dollars from the Biden resolution. We, this is not out of sight. We are top of, we are top of the news cycle as far as what's going on in our country with the schools. We can get this done and we can do it right and awesomely. And so let's give the building and grounds a lot of work to do so that we can really do this. That's all. Thank you.
You're a very insightful woman on how important my my buildings and grounds are, just all.
Well, you're very insightful for 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 being on the group.
Terrific. All right. Um, well, thank you, Ms. Tettler. And then uh, our next uh person is Jordan Warner. And I hope I pronounced your last name correctly.
It's actually Lisa. Jordan has to take the glory for everything. So.
And if you give your address too, thanks.
Yes, so um, two things. My address is eight hundred West Clover Knuckle Lane. I've got three children in the district. Two at Glen Hills, one at Parkway. So two things, I was wondering if there's any recognition program at the schools that allows parents to get involved to try to bring awareness to staff or teachers who who go above and beyond. So that's my first question. Um, my second question is through five days of picking up at Glen Hills, I was a little concerned about the the pickup system within the parking lot and thought it was a little bit dangerous and didn't know if, um, you know, just a a suggestion through, um, you know, just basic uh process strategy is is there a relay or something? So when someone calls in, you know, and the person in the lot calls in to the person inside who, you know, pushes in a number or whatever that system is, that they relay back, okay, you know, one seven two, check. And so that person then knows to go on to the next vehicle. So there's a continuous movement of a line versus the cars trying to weave in between to try to get out um in frustration. So those are just my two, my two points. Thank you.
Well, President Franklin, uh, Ellie Moser, if I may start, and then I'm gonna turn it to Ms. Young. We we've had an anonymous person, I'm gonna say that with a smile, who has contacted us with the suggestion on making sure that the staff at Glen Hills are safe uh, with proper apparel that so they don't get hit by cars in the parking lot. I'm saying that with a smile on my face because there is no worry, but we did uh make a purchase today based upon the uh the suggestion of that anonymous person. Uh, they were worried about, and they are legitimately concerned about the well-being of the staff. And the person who, that anonymous person is listening to this, uh, my answer right now. So uh, I I I I'm I'm being vague. So he is now recognizing.
I wonder who it was.
Yeah, I wonder who that was. So, um, Ms. Young, are you on that you can respond uh about the uh, the uh, the lineup of the of the uh vehicles, both the buses and the cars?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Um, so the calling of the numbers is sequential. We start with a left to right motion and then call as they move into the lot. The numbers are projected within student classrooms. Unfortunately, based on the way that students either recognize their number, how long it takes them to grab their things and come out or walk down from whatever location, it isn't going to be in a direct order because we have some students that may be closer to the exit based on where their proximity is in the building. So what we're doing is having students remain in their classrooms socially distanced. And then when they see their number, they're walking out um, either through the common space or they're walking down the seventh and eighth grade stairwell. So the fact that they would be lined up in order specifically isn't going to be something that would likely um occur um based on where they're coming from and their responsiveness to their number called. Um, we do have three lanes set up. We maintain a fourth lane and in the evening spread apart those lanes so that we can fit cars in between and and direct traffic through so that we can keep the flow of traffic going and off of Mill Road. Um, I will also add that we've had the Glendale Police Department be assistance to us too in helping parents make a right-hand turn and only turn into the lot in a right-hand manner um at the end of the day to help relieve congestion at the entrance to the lot.
I appreciate that. I, so I've got some facts. Yay. Um. So out of five days, three pickups. I, we had to request that the number be called in a second time because it wasn't heard the first time. So I'm wondering if people are calling in, if you've got three people in the lot and two of them are calling in on their walkie-talkie at the same time, one's not going to, one is gonna be cut out.
Right.
That's why I bring up the relay. Or if you do one lane and then as soon as that's done, then the next lane, no one's talking over each other. And the only reason why I bring it up is because I know parents are maybe trying to get, pick kids up between meetings and so time is of the essence. I don't think that it can be sequential in a perfect order at all. But I saw some pretty frustrated people and the person, I know I got, became very frustrated. The person next to me gunned it out of the lot. And you know what? You've got kids walking and parents walking. And I just thought, is there a way? And my my suggestion was relay Jordan, you know, goes right to safety. Um, but I just thought, is there a way that we could optimize security by adding another step? And maybe that's a relay. Maybe it's the the vest. I just wanted to put it out there that I thought it was a little dangerous and that I think three, three out of five there, something, something's going on. If it was just one time, it happens. But three times in one week is a lot.
Well, I think what she means is just so that when the number is read, that someone confirms that the number has been entered in the iPad or whatever it might be.
Yeah, if I, if I'm in the lot and I call four seven two, then whoever's, they're they're saying that to says back, okay, four seven two. Then I know, I'm in the lot, I know I can go to the next vehicle cuz that one has been, that one's been relayed. But when you have multiple vehicles who you've got to roll down your window or get out and say, hey, I've been here for twenty minutes and twenty minutes, that's twenty minutes was the minimum of three for the amount of time.
Yeah, and I will.
There's something going on.
Yep. So we call the numbers twice. We did have a meeting about somebody's checking the numbers after we had noticed that was a glitch. Part of my practice as a principal is to do daily huddles to try to troubleshoot problems. So that is that double checking is something that we're working through to have another person have eyes on the numbers being called.
Point of order, President?
Yeah.
I think, I just think that some of this should be talked in that that section when we're talking about opening of school. This is the question in our.
Well, this is.
I just, let me finish what I'm saying.
Argument about letting someone ask a question about student safety.
Let me finish my answer, my question. My question was, should this be in the part of the, when we're talking about opening and discussion of what happened in the school? It can still be done. I'm just talking about moving it to that section and not the question and answer part. That is it, President Franklin.
This is visitor participation and it's on any.
And non-agenda items. It's in the.
Specifically upfront so that it could be for any agenda or non-agenda item. Enough time. Ma'am, if you have anything else to add, uh, please uh complete.
I appreciate you listening, but I really did want to know if there was anything that parents can get involved in in terms of an internal recognition system for staff. I'm really interested in knowing more about that. And I can, that can be a separate conversation.
Thank you. And I don't know if anyone wants to comment on that real quick.
Maybe, sorry.
President Franklin, uh, we'll certainly, uh, I'll discuss that with the administrative staff that uh, that suggestion. I can't give you specifics at this time. It's certainly a good suggestion. But I I'll discuss that administratively and uh, and and uh, and report.
Well, can I just say, I mean, Lisa, I would add, I know the PTO has, it has done things like beloved train for staff. So I would also maybe reach out to anybody um in leadership there to see, cuz that's all, those are the kinds of things I know that they're they've been doing, right?
I know the state gives awards and certain things like that. So I can, I can do my own research too. I I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the comment. And then we have one more, looks like Jenny Doss.
Hi, I just wanted to give a quick kudos to some like really awesome things that I thought have happened over the last couple of weeks. Um, one, I was super excited about the fact that the school district offered the vaccinations, um, which my school district did not. So I was really excited about that. I also wanted to say that I was there on the um first day of school and saw Dr. Moser helping with traffic, which I wanted to give him a kudos because that was awesome. I also have heard, so you know, I have many students in the district and have heard from so many of the teachers over the last couple of weeks about things that my students are doing well, things that my students need some extra support in, and everybody has been really supportive, um, really professional. I've met the vice principal and um, I just really wanted to make a very public statement about how the um first week or two of has has been going just really well. So just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you very much. Very much.
Uh, President Franklin, may I speak during the visitor participation?
Absolutely. Take off your hat and.
All right, um, just to the, to the community, parents, to the the faculty and the administration and to the school board. On the twenty-third of March, uh, the administration has scheduled a community chat. Uh, we will be making ourselves available for parents, the community uh from two until two thirty uh, to to talk with us as administrators uh on on the reopening on summer school, on any topic that the that is of current uh, interest in in the community. We're gonna try to make ourselves available and and to talk. Uh, um, this would be a, the the community chat is just what it sounds like and a a dialogue between people. Normally, in a, in a visitor participation section of a school board, there there shouldn't be a dialogue back and forth. Uh, community members should be able to speak. We're setting up a community chat so that we can have that dialogue back and forth. Thank you, President Franklin.
No, thank you. What time again is it on the?
Two, two until two thirty on the twenty-third.
Dr. Moser, will you be advertising that through either email blast, Facebook, or Thursday folder or all?
I think it may have already been, it's going to be, yes. Uh, Karen, has it already been posted?
Seen it on a, I've seen it on a couple of different, like, Facebook and then.
I've seen it as well. So it is going out. It is out there.
Good.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Moser. That looks like all of our visitor participation comments. So going once, going twice. Okay, I'm gonna close visitor participation for today. Move on to item number five A, which is new business. New business, just A, uh, I'm sorry, five A is discussion and possible action on the recommendation from the School Board Communications Committee on revising the district's website.
So I guess I can, I can start with uh some, some, some support from Jenica and whomever, uh, and Teresa as part of our website working group. But as you guys know, the website working group convened, started working in November to just look at our website, assess our district needs, how we might revamp our website, um, and so forth. And we've done a lot of great work. We have reviewed three proposals from different uh website companies. Um, and we are coming here today with a recommendation to go forward with the one that we think is the best fit for the district based on um modernizing, updating our website, making it less clunky, making it more user-friendly as well as some of the the benefits of the tech support and training that this company offers. And the proposal, you'll see Jenica has attached some documents that um do show the proposal from Final Site, which is the company we as a group have um has come to a consensus would be the best fit for our district. Um, and I'm trying to think what else there is to say about that. I can say that I I do believe Dr. Moser has confirmed that we would have the the money for this year to begin this process upon board approval. Um, and let's see, and then I think we can just answer any other questions if there, if if you guys have had a chance, I don't know if you've had a chance to look over the proposal, the quote comparison and whatnot, but I think this will be a really positive step um, in implementing a new communication strategy for our district um, and making our website something that people can utilize and access information quickly, easily. Um, I think it's a great first step. So we'd be happy to entertain questions or comments. Yeah.
Well, I I have two things if I can. Uh, first off, I I do want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to you and the other members, Jenica and everyone else. Uh, I I if I recall, Karen was involved, there were other people. It is massive undertaking and something uh, that, you know, I I've seen you work on really hard and uh honestly, I think it's wonderful that we finally had, you know, the time to put that attention to it. So thank you very much for all the efforts, first of all, and I know that it's gonna be continuing. Um, this has been a priority for us, particularly for you. And so, you know, I'm really happy to see the leadership role you've taken in that. Um, I guess, you know, in terms of what differentiates um, this firm, you know, uh, in Final Site from uh the others. Would, if you could pick two or three things about their approach, uh, if if there are two or three things, just to to give me a sense of why you're recommending them.
Uh, I mean, I, Jenica, if you, I'm I'm happy to, but I know Jenica uh, and even Karen, one of the biggest, I don't know if many of you know, so so Tim Pankucci is also uh very involved on our communicate, on our, in our website working group along with Karen, Teresa, myself, and Jenica. Um, so big shout out to to all of them. But Karen currently is our, our person who runs all of our, all of our website and does all of that. And it is an extremely cumbersome duty for her be partially and or mainly because of our website and how it works right now. Um, it's very burdensome. So that was sort of a huge consideration on on my behalf, I think on the group's behalf is the ease of use of a new website as well as the technical support, the training and the ability to delegate um, potentially uh the the role of who may be responsible for updating and using this website. Um, those were huge things. And I'll let Jenica talk about some more.
Yeah, I would agree. I think um we're all on the same page for um ease of use and then also um how user-friendly it is. It 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 aligns and connects with our current system, um, our IC. So what we can do is we can push out information very easily and you can also push out information on um all different social media as well. So instead of Karen doing multiple posts in different ways, she can do one post and then it it is streamlined um to multiple different um communication pieces. The other thing that's really nice is that it also kind of saves all of those types of items and it automatically puts it in utilizing an accessibility um guide um to make sure that um our website is accessible to all users. So that's something that um we really wanted to make sure that we had. And then also it's accessible to um all different languages as well. So we can really, um, anybody with vision issues or any of those types of things can read our website without having us send it somewhere, have it looked at and do a lot of work behind the scenes to make that work. The other thing, again, um, like Danielle um talked about, Ms. Bailey, was that training and support. And the one thing that they offered, like really pushed them over on the other two companies was the support and the training that's offered. So they do have um recorded videos and webinars that walk you through the process. So anybody in our district, so if somebody were to leave a position, we would have access to that training and support um all the time. So if I needed to learn how to do a piece of the website, I'm able to just go to that um, little section and pick out the different webinars or or videos that I would need to watch to be able to use that section of the website. And then also they have um like a twenty-four hour ticket system as well. So if we did need some immediate support or whatnot, they're available for us. And and I just think um the relationship, how we felt, I'm having those conversations with this team. I I just thought that they were exceptional. Besides the fact that their websites um blew the other ones out of the water on their design. I I just thought that they were exceptional, besides the fact that their websites blew the other ones out of the water on their design features. They're just really well, well done. So I think overall, this one just grabbed us. And the price was in the middle. So that was another positive. So they're really not overpaying for services either.
I saw that. Looks like there's a lot of value rolled up into that price for five years. All right. Does anyone else have any questions? All right. Well, then we've done the presentation from Ms. Bailey, Ms. Westfall. So I'm going to ask if there is a motion on the recommendation to hire Final Site. Okay, so Ms. Bailey seconds, Teresa made the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, sing none. I'm going to go call vote.
That was celebratory music for our new website.
Okay, the motion carries. Celebratory music continues. The motion passes. Congratulations on all the hard work. I am really excited. Thank you. Okay. Then onto item five B, approval of a revised school board policy, GCB, professional staff contract and compensation plans.
President Franklin, if I may present this item and with the any any additional comments from members of the planning, the school board policy committee. We've had two readings in the policy committee on policy GCB. It is revised. The policy makes it very clear that only the school board has the authority to approve of compensation and contracts for employees in the school district. There is one change I have to present as in reference to the policy that appears in the school board packet. I missed a word that the committee chair seem had directed be placed in the in the policy. And I apologize for that. If I may read the way it should read, as was directed by the committee. And it was my mistake that I didn't get put in the packet. It's the second last paragraph should read, the district administrator shall submit recommended salary increases, stipends, bonuses. Concerning all employees to the board for final approval. I had left out the word recommended and I should not have. And I would, as the board is taking action on that, we will, I will make that correction as the policy committee had directed me.
Okay, then I will ask if there's a motion on the recommendation.
So moved Danielle.
Teresa, Tamika, do you want to second it?
I will second Teresa.
Terrific. Is there any additional discussion? Well, I would just add that I think.
Turn that off.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I just want to add that I think that the policy committee has been doing a lot of hard work and we're really honing our policies and making them more uniform. And it's been a continuing effort for us over the course of the school year. So I applaud the efforts and and thank you for bringing this forward. Dr. Moser, just to correct me, is this the first reading or the second reading?
This is the second reading. We've had two, we've had two readings in the policy committee. So this would be ready for board action.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to confirm. Then I will, having a motion second, no further discussion. I'll do roll call vote. Danielle Bailey.
I.
Tamika Bukovic. And Treat Seem.
I.
And Andrew Franklin votes I. The motion carries. The policy is adopted. Thank you. Okay, new business number five C, approval of donation. It is recommended that the board approve donation made by Dr. Pablo Bozovich. I hope I pronounced his name right. One thousand dollars to National Junior Honor Society. Dr. Moser, do you have anything to add?
Well, I we certainly would like to thank the the good doctor for his generosity. And on behalf of the school board, we will be and 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 upon the school board action tonight, we will certainly be thanking him for his support of the National Junior Honor Society at the Glen Hills Middle School. Very thoughtful. It was, it's it's just, it's his own. We did not solicit this, but as much appreciated, and that makes it even worth more when someone sees a need and has made a voluntary contribution to to serve the Glen Hills Middle School. So we we thank him and his support of the school in the Glen Hills Middle School.
Wonderful. Is there a motion?
So moved Danielle.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I just wanted to say thank you again, Dr. Bozovich. It is a wonderful gift. It is very helpful. And it is always hard to run public school on state funding in the state. And so the donation that you make, either in goods or in dollars, as well as the contributions that our volunteers make, it is all very, very much very graciously appreciated. So thank you very much. I'll do a roll call vote. Danielle Bailey.
I.
Tamika Bukovic.
I.
And Treat Seem. And I'll pass on Treat Seem and Franklin votes I. Ms. Seem. And I will just, I guess she's passing. So I will say that the motion passes. Thank you again. And item six, discussion items, discussion on twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two district calendar.
Thank you, President Franklin, members of the school board. Coming up on March twenty fourth, the the school board curriculum committee is holding a special meeting at four thirty, on which there'll be no more than three topics of significance. And the twenty one twenty two district calendar is one of those topics. On January twentieth, the school board approved of the calendar for the ensuing school year, twenty one twenty two. But a great deal has happened since that the board approving that calendar, including the pandemic, the reopening of school, the passing of various bills at the federal level, whether it's the CARES Act, the ESER, the the bill recently proposed by President Biden and Governor Evers recommending that school districts consider starting school early in the twenty one twenty two school year. The administration wants to discuss with the school board on the twenty fourth in the curriculum committee meeting, the concept of starting school earlier in the twenty one twenty two school year. Starting earlier could mean adding three days of school for students could mean five days. We will go into details with the curriculum committee. We will discuss the financial implications, for example, in preliminary calculations. And these are preliminary. We have been notified by Congressperson Gwen Moore that we could expect up to one million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to help us with various expenses dealing with the calendar, summer school, other reopening and COVID nineteen expenses. So on the twenty fourth, this will be discussed. For example, opening school for a three day, three additional days, I anticipate will cost about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. If we would open for five additional days, it would cost approximately one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. All those expenses would come out of that, the money I identified that Congressperson Gwen Moore has identified for us. But at this point, it's 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 general, general statements on my part. We will get into details with the curriculum committee on what we are proposing. So for the community and for the school board and for the faculty, the administration has started this discussion. We have been discussing it. And this is important. This is an important discussion for the for the community and the school district. And tonight, I'm not asking for any decisions or any discussion other than to make the board and the faculty and the community and parents aware that this topic is being discussed now with the availability of the additional funds, which I will editorially editorially say are deeply appreciated by the Glendale River Hill School District.
You know, may I ask a quick question about this? Certainly using funds and possibly doing this, which will help in planning for fall, it brings some options. Would we be potentially extending school year two?
Yes, that's what it would be. It would be extending the.
Let me clarify, extending the last day of school into June? Or would we only be building up by adding something, you know, up to five days in the beginning? We're not talking about making it longer in June as well. We're just talking about.
Administrative, in the administrative discussions that has been suggested. Nothing has been finalized. We've been discussing it. So I'll have to say that option has been discussed administratively. The reason of the, I'm mentioning starting school or school early is Governor Evers has that has been something that he has been promoting and encouraging for use of the federal monies. And it's, and I will have to say many school districts, many school districts are making are making this a consideration in discussions with their school boards.
All right. If no one else has anything to add, I can move on to the next item, which twenty two to twenty three specifically.
Thank you, President Franklin, members of the school board. This too is a first reading of the just making the board aware that we are trying to have a two years of approved calendars so we can do planning. Our neighbors in the other Nicolay area school districts are, we're all four of us are trying to have our our calendars approved for twenty two, twenty three, either in March or in April. By presenting this to you, it's it's a first reading. There's a chance it will be changed. It was put together by a calendar committee made up of of administrators, staff and and faculty. Nothing is in concrete yet, other than by by the April board meeting, we probably will want that this be something that the board will take action on.
If no one else has any comments, I will move on to item number sixteen, which is discussion on twenty twenty one, summer academy slash summer school.
President Franklin, members of the school board, this is the second topic on the agenda for the curriculum committee on March twenty fourth. Is the summer school. This is another area where we, where it is being encouraged of that schools, because of the pandemic, because of COVID nineteen, that we, that schools consider an enhanced summer academy, summer school program. And we have started that discussion. One way in which we are looking at this is to eliminate all the fees for Glendale River Hill School District students so that we can count the students that are attending summer school in our count, our student count. That is beneficial to the Glendale River Hill School District. It also is beneficial to the students so that we eliminate any any financial reasons why children would not be attending school. The administration, under the leadership of Dr. Smith, have started their planning. Dr. Smith has sent out a a notice asking teachers if they're interested in teaching. Dr. Smith has been gathering information on the types of courses that will be offered. And it appears that we're going to, we're going to try to have a variety of courses which would range from the traditional summer academy courses to more academically oriented courses, let's say in math and and reading literacy in in the middle school. But we're going to try to encourage a a summer school program that will run from eight in the morning till two in the afternoon to be followed by a Nicolay recreation program that would start at two and go to five. We have identified some stipulations for Nicolay and offering their their program. But again, the details will come to the curriculum committee for for action and 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 working out the all those details. And the money for this would come again out of the federal funds. Out of that million, two hundred and sixty thousand that are coming from the three bills, we've already spent three hundred and thirty thousand. And so we're keeping that in mind. Plus, I asked the board to keep in mind that a percentage of the federal money that's coming has to go to private and parochial schools that work with the Glendale River Hill School District. We we have, we have no choice. Those are our partner school districts. And we'll be required to have a percentage of the of the money that's coming to to this Glendale River Hill Schools will go out to the private and parochial schools in the in the general area. But I think you can see that meeting on the twenty fourth is an extremely important meeting for our planning coming up for the summer and for the start of the twenty one twenty two school year. So any questions or comments on 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 the summer school of for I I I think Dr. Smith is on, or or I can try to answer questions too. Or take comments.
If I can, I'm just curious. Well, two things. First of all, I just wanted to stress, this would be in person. This would be socially distant, right?
That is correct. That is correct.
And so, and that's, you know, wonderful. I guess the other question is, we're going to be doing this and hopefully making it free of charge based on the funding. What happens in subsequent summers?
That will, the subsequent summers will have to be part of your planning process. Number one, I do not plan to spend the whole one million, two hundred and sixty thousand this summer. And this money that you're going to be, we're going to be receiving is allowed to be carried over. And so I would expect some of that will happen. But depending on the count, the the usual, the usual outcome of using the student count during summer school is that it is advantageous financially for the district to not charge fees. You cannot count students in your FTE or your annual count if you charge fees for a summer school. So that's why I'm proposing that we not do it. Now, Dr. Smith is working with the DPI to make sure that some of the changes we're talking about are allowable. For example, we are discussing whether we're the the concept that we will serve breakfast and lunch. Are allowable. For example, we are discussing whether we're, the, the concept that we will serve breakfast and lunch. And that we'll have busing for summer school. We want to make sure those are allowable expenditures under the federal funds. So I can't promise you for the summer of 2022. What you will do. But I, I would, I would think depending on how it works in the summer of 2021. There may be strong, there may be strong encouragement by the community and by the school district. That you would continue some of the practices that we're going to, we're going to have. But keep in mind that one of the reasons the money is coming is because of the present pandemic. And the fact that we have been out of school, it did not reopen until March 8th. And. There is a purpose why that money is coming. The 1,260,000 is a lot of money. And, and it's. We, we want to make sure we put it to good use.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Okay, then item six D is discussion on the use of 2020 to 2021 IDEA funds.
President Franklin and members of the school board, the third topic for the curriculum committee meeting is. The use of IDEA funds. I am proposing, I will be proposing. That the school board will, will respond to a recommendation from me. To hire an individual to review our special education program and make recommendations on reorganization. We do have the IDEA funds available. I, I, I'm not sure there's a better use for those funds than this, this review. Extremely important. And I, and I, I am recommending that that review take place yet this year. So that it's in place for the 2122 school year. So I will be asking the, the, the school board. I, I, I asked the, I discussed this topic with the personnel and finance committee during their meeting. That I'm asking for permission to contract with the, an individual. For the purpose of studying and making recommendations on our special ed program. And, and, and bringing that information back to the school board. So they can be implemented for the 2122 school year.
Okay.
And as you can see, that meeting, those three topics are heavy duty topics. They are extremely important and I encourage parent, community. Attendance because of the, the significance of those three topics.
Okay. Thank you very much. If no one else has any further comments, then on item six E, update on superintendent search. And I guess that's going to follow me, Dr. Moser. So let me just try to pull out a couple of big points here. We have just a few more days left, really till 21st to get additional. Completed applications. Right now we have almost 30 completed applications. This is actually last week's statistics. So maybe more, almost 30 that are complete. And there were about 11 that were incomplete. So we're expecting to have at least 40 completed applications for superintendent. I know that they've been coming from a lot of different areas, primarily in Southeast Wisconsin and Milwaukee area. But as far away as Iowa, I think Northern Illinois is in the mix, Michigan as well. So we are getting a geographical mix of candidates. Next week on the 24th, after. The curriculum meeting is going to be another discussion. And this time we're going to bring in Rain Associates and to just go over our final process for going through interviews. So most, not all of that meeting will be an open session, I believe. So while we want to have formal visitor participation, we will be able to let people peer behind the curtain and see what's going on up till now. I can tell you that generally speaking, what will happen is our search firm is going to present us with a number of applications, about a dozen or so. And the board's going to go through an initial screening with that and then ultimately narrow down to a group of candidates that we're going to bring to the public. And so we're going to have the meeting at 3:24 with Rain Associates. The board's going to have a couple of meetings where it goes through the candidate list and possibly a couple of interviews as well before then. But what I want to do is I want to point out that on April 19th. We're going to have a community interview session of what we expect to be the top two to three finalists. And so for that, we're going to have a staggered group of interviews of community members, the administrative teams, staff and the board. Where we're going to have an opportunity to some degree in person, we still figure out all the particulars. To meet with those top candidates and get public input. After that, it's our sincere hope that on April 21st, we at least announce selection. These are all tentative date, but that's our, our target. We want to have a final contract in place. But right now it looks like we are on track and on the right path to getting someone. I've been told that we have a lot of very highly qualified candidates who've been applying and it's been a very smooth process. I've had weekly meetings with our search firm and I, I think that we are really synced up here. So it's a smooth process. It's an exciting process. The community is going to have a role in this and we're going to make it as open as we can. So stay tuned for more details because it's coming pretty quickly. And if anyone has any questions, I can take them. And if not, I will move on.
Yeah, you know, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, can I just suggest or ask that we attempt to advertise this, our open session with Rain Associates? Maybe with the help of Karen with a Thursday folder post or an email or, or something. I know something will go out like a day or two before, you know, announcing the meeting, but I'm just wondering if we could put something out there sooner.
And it's a great idea if, if Karen, I don't know if you're listening.
I can follow up with her. I just, if they're okay with that, I think we should make sure people know that that's happening.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. My wife is going to kill me if I don't mention this. So I, I have to just point out that. We've had some success in Future City. Our last item of motion adjourned, so I'm sorry to keep everyone. But I want everyone to go into Glen Hills Parent Site. There's a link there to vote. For People's Choice Award for our Glen Hills team that went to Nationals for Future City. We've done it two years in a row. Last year, we won the Wisconsin regional competition. We went to Nationals. We were in top 10. This year, we had another team that went off, won Wisconsin, went off to Nationals. And they have an online People's Choice Award. So I don't have all the information from me, but I know if you remember that Glen Hills Facebook page. There's a link there so that you can vote for the Glendale New Moon City team. So I wanted to point that out so that I didn't have to worry about the recourse from Mrs. Franklin. Or for that matter, Mrs. Marali, who's put in tireless effort to make the Future City program a success. So thank you for indulging me. And with that, item seven A is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Well, seeing no, there we go. An enthusiastic second. I will do a voice vote. All in favor. I, and opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you all for joining us and we look forward to seeing you again. Bye bye.